Let's just add one or other business, just uh. Even if there's nothing to talk about, but. Cause I see we got the.
Auction House.
Auction House. So I'll just. I'll just, whatever motion or non-motion, whatever the hell it is, add it probably right after with Auction House or right after Auction House. Sound good?
Yeah. I don't see portfolio updates on there either and I got one other thing.
I ain't got nothing anyway. There was no. MAC Ed meeting after our last meeting. Anyway, was there? Think so. Had the board meeting, that was before our last meeting. Yeah, I don't have anything. Haven't heard anything from the state either on. Bills. There's some interesting bills in that. Being proposed. And listen to.
That's a good way to put it.
Yeah.
Rick's got stuff here.
I say Rick must be here because we've got some things there.
Four seconds.
Good morning, Rick.
Morning, Rick.
Morning, morning.
Is Jamie gonna be here?
Yes.
Okay.
See Jim are over there.
You guys ready with the video? Okay, we'll start. Um, I'll call this meeting of the Mercer County Commission to order. Um, is there any changes to the agenda?
Uh, I'd like just to add, uh, the Social Service Building. Just for discussion or whatever, see where we're at.
Okay, and then, um. I was asked to add on our annual bidding for equipment supplies and products. Um, so, uh, annual bidding. Um, we'll put on the other business. And, um, portfolio updates. Anything else?
I move to approve as amended.
Okay.
Hopefully Jamie didn't have anything else.
Motion by Jean to prove the agenda as amended, is there a second?
A second.
Uh, second by Liza. Any discussion? Seeing none, Jean?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
All vote aye, that motion passes. Um, we have two sets of minutes. Let's do the January eighteenth ones first.
Well, I make a motion to approve as presented.
Okay, motion by Jean to prove as presented, is there a second?
No, second.
Second by Rick. Any discussion, corrections, or additions to the minutes? Seeing none, Jean?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
All vote aye, that motion passes. Uh, next we got the special meeting on the twenty-third.
I, uh, move to approve as presented.
Okay, motion by Jean to prove minutes as presented, is there a second?
A second.
Second by Jamie, any discussion? Seeing none, Jean?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Uh, all vote aye, that motion passes. Uh, review and approve bills.
Yes, we know the clock in here is about three minutes fast.
I was talking to Jim and I was like.
Sadly to say, as I was told, because I've been late, we go by that clock.
Well, but it's not always two or three minutes fast sometimes.
Not always, nope.
So.
Nope. But it's almost three minutes fast right now, but anyway, start interrupting. Oh, we're on our bills anyway, okay.
Yeah, you can fill random, uh, quiet time.
Okay, I wasn't way, I wasn't.
Where's your elevator music? Start seizing.
I wasn't way out of order. Just slightly. Now we do the. Trying to think of the game show now, can't think of the Jeopardy music. My wife went to the grocery store the other morning, did take her phone with her. My daughter's damn near did call the sheriff. They were calling me there. I said, I don't know, maybe she left the house without it. My mom's definitely without her phone. No, she was that.
Did you tell them there was a time when we didn't have cell phones?
Can you imagine? Take off to Washington in the middle of the winter and. When you got there, you called home and said, I made it.
Yeah. Yeah, I would, I would leave somewhere, mom would set the timer for approximate time it should take me to get there, and if I didn't call when I get there, then.
As long as there were no establishments in the way.
Well, I was an old enough for establishments.
As long as there weren't establishments in the way. It's crazy.
For services.
What's with this one? Yeah, it only costs thirty-four dollars. It's better than. A thousand dollars to eat all thirteen dollars. You're, you're ready for questions? What is this? Very seldom.
Yeah, that's.
There'll be very few. Usually the ones that. Partake to the jail and they chuckle. Things that just make me go.
Travis, this may be the one.
Amongst many other items.
A login or you just register for those?
Uh, we, we don't have.
Do you log in every time?
With your email is pretty much the biggest thing.
Okay. I was looking at it on my phone, so I'll have to look at them because I couldn't find the spot to create and accomplish.
It's when you try to register, right?
Directly. It didn't, she sent me the emails, but maybe I'll.
You might already be in it then already. Yeah, you might be.
Okay, I'll have to, I'll follow up. Which would make sense of how to track if that's. Yeah, okay, I'll look at it again.
What's that?
I was on my phone and sometimes operating systems don't.
Yeah, I usually do it on a computer.
Yeah.
It's, it's funny how sometimes you need to work better on the phone, some work better on the computer.
It's crazy to me.
I coughed into my hand after a good shit. I used to share her drink. Doesn't bother me, but. That's other getting crazy.
I'm pretty sure.
And that's all I need is alcohol on those, they can drive the arm. Then you're just like.
Well, this month I about had a stroke.
Good morning Cindy.
Not that one, like.
No, you're.
Personal, I was like.
Gotta do a third job now.
Just take my left, just take my left kidney please.
You're running a lot over here.
Oh, budget stuff, I didn't know what it was.
Yeah.
Probably that I'm answering myself already.
Well, just don't get in arguments.
No, yeah, I did talk to Jim about this. They've called a few times, I guess.
For human fire? Port?
They have flower bulbs on the.
Heart.
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 I haven't said port too, but.
Oh, that's Jim Alberts. He's been in here somewhere. Oh yeah, we gotta keep their human for the. Oh, is this for the, um, county employees? But then we pay for each test. We gotta pay an annual fee and then for each.
I think that's the. Carmen, is that state radio siren or is that something else?
This is, uh, the IPOS, the nine oh one reverse IPOS system that I use when I send out awards. And every year the state will give us our fee for that.
So it comes to the county.
For that service.
It's a difference.
Yeah, it comes from the nine oh one. And then I bill all of her for that portion of it.
That's high school. Yeah, well, that's cool.
Do you know that?
What we're gonna do is we're gonna pile it up.
There's a certain way to pile it. I know when I came, when I looked at it before. It had four, I looked at it, it had four forms and I asked him about that and he said, you guys only have two of them, right? Do you look at the same, it looks like there's four. And it was something about adding the line, taking the line off, but I said, I said, can we take Russell's name off? Just so we make sure that we don't continuously. I thought we had his for us. It would may have cut me at the sharp. Yes.
I have changed to sixty-six.
And I noticed our software, they said it only does halves. Can't they do three numbers, like six five?
I think then it looks like six one five instead of.
I'm just saying like.
Oh no.
Three instead of point six five instead of point six six or what? Makes sense.
It's, it's one of those things.
Hey Glenn. Can we pull the Verizon bills for the maintenance department? Because that one looks like it's late, but we thought we remembered looking at it for.
It was paid, it was paid, that's why we took the only older eighty-four ten on that bill. We've talked to Verizon on it.
Okay.
They just didn't get the last payment prior to the billing being printed.
Okay.
So that's been resolved?
Okay, because I'm like, I, we looked at it because there was, Russell was on it twice and Jim was on it twice and, okay.
They've created a big. Ever since we. We did lose telephone numbers.
Yeah.
And ever since we did the number change, there's been a mess on this bill.
Okay.
We've been in contact with everything.
Okay.
Uh, we have a motion by Rick to approve the bills as presented, is there a second?
A second.
Second by Jamie, any discussion? Seeing none, Rick?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Jean?
Aye.
All vote aye, that motion passes. Uh, we have about ten minutes until we get into the zoning. You wanna talk about the auction house?
Sure.
Jim would like to be here, so if I can get him over here, Jim would like to be here for that.
Well, if we wanna push that back a little bit, because by the time he gets here, then.
Right.
Twenty-two budget amendments, um, I don't think those are ready yet, right? Yeah, so we'll put that on the next agenda?
Okay.
Okay. Anything with HR? I don't know if we just had that put on the agenda or.
I, I just wanted to let everybody know that I have contacted, um, a couple of other counties just to see what they have for it, what they do and stuff, and I do have. Um, two job descriptions, one from Morton County and one from Dunn County, that I could distribute to you guys. Um, as soon as I get a chance to get to a printer to do that, I just like literally got them yesterday. So I just wanted to let you guys know that I am doing some research on it and will present that as well to everybody here.
So you want that on the next agenda?
Yep.
Okay. Um, see these are going quick. Uh, Hazen Golf Course liquor license renewal?
All courses applying for their annual on sale, on sale beer and on sale liquor license. And they've paid their fee for it also.
And we never had issues with that before, no.
No, and it goes through us because they're not in city limits, so.
I move to approve.
Okay.
A second.
Motion by Jean, uh, seconded by Rick, he beat you to it Jamie.
That's fine.
Um, any discussion?
Yeah, so there's no. No issues with it that.
No.
Okay.
Just an annual renewal.
Yep.
Okay, any other discussion? Seeing none, Jean?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
All vote aye, that motion passes. Do we need Don in here for the ARPA fund or anything?
Yes.
Okay.
Should call him.
Yeah, she'll be easy to get here quick.
Hey Don, yes, they're ready to talk about ARPA funds. Oh, is Don there? Oh. Oh, sorry, Don, wrong.
Sorry, I'm looking for the treasures.
Wrong Don.
I'm sorry. It's two oh two, two twos and two twos.
Oh yeah, and Don is dispatching today.
I don't know any of them.
I just came back today.
Keep her under cover, right?
What, what department did you get that time?
I got the right side.
Travis signs that.
Add it to your job description. Don is working dispatch today.
There's three pages I found.
I usually look. Reminder's always good.
Up front and center. Yeah, here. Unless the chairman tells you otherwise, I think.
I was waiting for her to come in the side. So we had on the agenda just, uh, the ARPA and the HB funds, I know you dropped this up beforehand, but, um. I guess any questions from the commission or any comments from?
No, I just would came in here to listen because I was wondering if you still wanted to split those HB fifteen oh five funds out of that fund they're in.
Was this discussion at the last meeting?
Well, I remember we talked about it when Marvin was here, we talked about splitting them out. And I thought, we decided since they were in this fund and they would be pretty easily, easily traceable. Not to do it, but.
Remind me what HB fifteen oh five is?
That's the county road money that we got last year in January.
And it's supposed to be used on county roads and I think ARPA in the fund and then when we're ready to use it, we. Just pay out of that fund or do we transfer to the county?
But, um, I didn't know because also our state, as you can see, our state payments, our state township road payments go into that fund as well, our quarterly payments. So I didn't know if you still wanted to flip it, switch it out into its own fund so that you could. Trace exactly what went out of there or if you wanted to just leave it in there and. In some ways I think it's easy to trace in here, but on the other hand, I can see where you might want it in its own fund and I think we have. An extra number set up because we've set up a fund for something else and decided we didn't need it, so I think we may have an extra number that we could use for those funds.
Okay.
What is your recommendation?
It's to me, it'd be a lot cleaner if it'd be by itself, so.
Yeah, and Carmen and I talked to, and Gwen had talked about this the other day too, and we talked about whether it needed to be separated out and at that time I thought it was okay in here, but I thought about it a little bit and thought. Since it's got its specific uses, that it has to be used or it might be better to put it in its own fund.
Well, I don't think it really matters to us, but whatever works best for you guys for tracking purposes, so if you want us to move it into that separate fund. That's easy enough for us to do.
Yeah. The only reason I bring that up and I said it that way, I asked the question the way I did is because. Five years from now. You had probably two or three different commissioners and they're sitting looking at this going, well, what's this fund for? So, it's, that, that's what I get at when you get, we start all these. Special funds and putting money in different areas and. And then all at once, w- w- you know, like someone like me who's quite new on the commission, I go, what's this fund for? So, that, that's all I brought it up for.
And if we're gonna put it in a separate fund, we probably should specifically label it HB fifteen oh five, just so, I mean, there's no question about where.
Origined from.
What it was supposed to be used for.
Do we ever go back through and close ones once we've finished with them?
Um, do, I don't know how many funds are sitting out there that aren't being used right now, I wouldn't have a clue of that.
And I don't know if we keep those open for historic reasons or not, but is.
I'm gonna say yes, but I don't know, because I know like, um, some of the funds, like, um, emergency fund, we used to have some funds like emergency and some of those kinds of funds that got. Or the human service funds that got come, are no longer needed because we don't levy for those anymore, I'm thinking those funds are still sitting out there, open with no money in them, but I don't know that for a fact.
But there's no money in them, you're saying?
Shouldn't be.
Or some of them? You don't know that, okay, I got you.
Yeah.
Understood.
I see those reports once in a while, but I don't see them a lot and so I don't know exactly what's in them, but.
Okay.
Commissioners, we need a motion?
To use for this, I don't think.
Okay. Go ahead.
I moved that we moved the. I know, uh, fifteen oh five funds to their separate fund, is that how you wanna word it?
Works for me.
Yeah, okay, motion by Rick to move the House Bill fifteen oh five funds to its own fund, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Liza, any discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none, Rick?
Aye.
Eliza?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Jean? I said Jamie.
Oh, aye.
I'll vote aye.
I was confused also what you said. If it was Jean or Jamie.
That's not my fault, you guys. That motion passes.
At least I'm listening, but not real close.
Right, right, right. And then um, it looks like we should expect another payment which would have been normally allocated to townships, but since we don't have organized townships, it comes to the county. Is that my understanding?
We got that payment.
Oh, we got that, okay.
We have it already. Except I looked this morning and I think we're a hundred and seventy-three dollars and thirty-two cents short because I looked at what went in there, what I receipted, and um, it doesn't match exactly what they say we're supposed to get, so I'm not sure what to do about that.
Okay.
I'm thinking on that one, I don't know.
Do they call that administrative fee or?
Yeah. And I don't know if that was like, and if if it's an estimate, I'll have to go back and read the email. If it's an estimate, I'll just let it go because it's a hundred and seventy dollars or something like that.
When they give us almost two point five.
When you're talking two point two, two point four million dollars, yeah, I'm not gonna quibble over a hundred dollars, a hundred and seventy dollars, I guess.
Okay. All right. Well, thanks for coming in, Don.
Thank you.
Thank you, Don.
All right.
Five seconds.
Five seconds?
There.
Okay.
Are you sure that that's right?
It's our official time clock. All right, uh, planning and zoning stuff. Cindy, you're up.
Okay, temporary use permit number six oh seven is a renewal from Casey Voight for the Scoria pit. Oh, it's ten acres in the northwest quarter of section thirty-one, township one forty-three, range eighty-eight. And that's renewal, I don't, these are all renewals, all these temporary uses. Do you want me to go through all of them separate or what do you wanna do?
Um, we'll probably approve them separately, but I guess you want her to run through all of them at once and then we just approve.
Well, I suppose we should do them separately. Someone might have something to say about one of them. I don't, but.
You don't, okay. Um, okay, any questions on the temp use six oh seven? No issues with complaints or anything?
Nope.
Move to approve.
Motion by Jean to approve temp use six oh seven. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Eliza. Any discussion? Seeing none, Jean?
Aye.
Eliza?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
I'll vote aye. That motion passes.
Okay, number six oh eight is a temporary use permit application from Randy Byram for the Scoria pit in the south half of the north half of section three, township one forty-five eighty-seven, and that's also a renewal. And I haven't had any complaints on that.
Move to approve.
So wait, sand or Scoria?
That's Scoria. Did I say sand?
You said Scoria.
You said Scoria, but on the agenda it says sand.
Oh, I probably screwed that up.
The second one, six oh nine says Scoria. Six oh eight says sand.
Well, then I'm well, I have six oh nine as a sand and six oh eight. They're turned around.
They're turned around.
So six oh eight is the Scoria pit one?
Yep.
Is there a motion to approve?
It's one or the other.
Motion by Jean, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Jamie. So temp use six oh eight Scoria pit. Any discussion on that one?
Mine's, okay, I'm now I'm confused. Mine says Scoria pit.
On this page on our agenda.
She's saying on the agenda.
Oh, sorry, okay.
They're backwards, that's why I was questioning.
Okay.
We all on the same page now, six oh eight is the Scoria pit.
That's me, my copy and paste.
No, it it happens. Okay, any other discussion? Seeing none, Jean?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Eliza?
Aye.
I'll vote aye. That motion passes.
Okay, temporary use permit number six oh nine is a application from Randy Byram for the sand pit in overbitten, overburden pit. It's twenty acres within the east half of the southeast quarter of section thirty-two, township one forty-five eighty-seven. I haven't had any complaints on that either.
Move to approve.
Motion by Jean, seconded by Rick to approve temp use permit six oh nine. Any discussion? Seeing none, Jean?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Eliza?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
I'll vote aye. That motion passes.
Temporary use permit number six ten is a renewal application from Stratoc Corporation for a portable crusher and screening operations, stockpile of material onsite and imported materials. It's a portion of the southwest quarter, section twenty-six, one forty-four eighty-four. And I haven't had any complaints on that either.
Um, move to approve.
Okay, motion by Jean, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Eliza?
Where?
What's that? Any discussion, Jean?
Where's where's this at?
That's out by Dwight and Darby's house.
Oh, right out here. Oh, okay.
Any complaints or I I know that one had some in the past, I think, or was that a different one?
No, not any new ones. I was just asked to go and take pictures.
Okay.
And I did, and I don't.
Where is, do we know where the material's being imported from? No. Nick, is your, where is your material being imported from?
As of right now, nothing.
Okay.
Just when we have the separate projects.
Okay.
That doesn't make sense that that we would have to bring in rocks or something.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, any other discussion? Seeing none, Jean?
Aye.
Eliza?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
I'll vote aye. That motion passes. Um, your next one on here, I'm gonna, um, I'm involved with this on the engineering side and personal family relations, so I'm gonna recuse myself and turn it over to Jean. So I'm gonna step down.
I didn't, I don't know if you want me to put the plat up on the screen or. You want this, this, sure, the plat? You have the, which one there it is or?
So we're gonna discuss zoning case twenty-two dash eleven dash zero one.
Okay, this is a resolution to amend the Marshall County zoning district map, and it's for that lazy H second subdivision. It's a tract of land being a portion of eighty-nine point nine-two acre tract located within the northwest quarter of section nine, township one forty-six, range eighty-seven. And there will be, you're changing, you'd be changing it from egg to R one and commercial. And there, they don't, we don't have the final plat though. They did approve the preliminary plat at the last planning and zoning meeting. Oh, no, Travis, any questions for Travis or?
And did you make sure that all of being discussed here today is the rezoning portion, not the plat? So I don't wait till the.
Yeah, it has to be rezoned before he can put the application in for the final replat.
Yeah, but I'll worry, but it's not, this won't have any.
No, but I just thought in case, you know, it's kinda hard to wrap your mind around it unless you see it, what you're doing.
And is this like eighteen oh six, like up like by Buell Bay?
Yeah, it's right across, just east of Lake Shore Estates.
Okay.
So Dakota Waters is to the southwest, Lake Shore Estates is to the west.
It's that one field there?
Yeah, and then you see that fifteen acre tract on the bottom. That's the campers and stuff.
Okay.
That that heineson's out.
Okay.
So.
Yeah, this is a process that we have laid out in our code, so.
I'm just still trying to wrap my head around where it's.
Where's it?
Where it's at.
After the S curves coming into Buell Bay.
It's right on the right-hand side.
As you're turning off of the bay into Dakota Waters.
Okay.
There you, it would be on your left-hand side. There's a couple of houses there on their own, and it's area behind that.
Okay.
Actually, the area, I think Travis can correct that.
So, let's see. The big curve on eighteen oh six is right here. And then you have Dakota Waters, which is out here, and Lake Shore Estates, and the development is just here. So you come in, uh, eighteen oh six to come towards, um, Buell Bay, I believe, up here.
Okay, now I've I was, there's some spots on here that are.
It's on the south side of that road. Yeah, okay.
First question I have for the rezoning part of it is now the, um, there's those original houses that are there, there's like four of them. When I was reading in some of this P and Z stuff that we had, now there, that is all gets, that's all incorporated into one, I don't know how that works.
So.
Like the original, those four houses right by the road, they're they're gonna be part of the whole plan. It's a way, has that all already been rezoned, that part?
Those have already been rezoned. He's talking about the four to the west here. This was the first addition. As part of this those weren't in the watershed that the bigger development is, and then um, between planning and zoning and the water resource board, they incorporated new um, ordinances and codes to follow. So this development's gonna have stormwater management, which the um, northwest parcel there, it's like six and a half acres, that's gonna be for detention pond as required by the water resource district. So we're not asking for rezoning of that because it's just gonna be a pond. Um, the commercial is across the top and then where you see the cul-de-sac is the residential part, but the four lots you're talking about to the west, those were rezoned residential in twenty eighteen, I believe, is it?
Um, yeah, before, yeah, sometime in twenty eighteen.
Yeah, twenty eighteen.
So the pond area is gonna remain as egg, is that?
Yeah, so the forty-three acres on the east side, it's the lot one block five or six. It's
This is a remaining portion of that eight ninety, because that's gonna remain egg. This corner's gonna remain egg and the one just for, it's all.
With the 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 water retention pond is that's in the development, that's going to be zoned, what?
That's gonna remain egg. It's not gonna be zoned anything because it's essentially a detention pond.
So, I mean, does, who who takes care, who who's gonna, nobody's gonna own that? Who owns, was a HOA, is it part of that or?
Yeah, so until anything is sold, it's still owned by the developer. Um, they're gonna create an HOA, um, and the HOA then would assume.
Assume that. I was just wondering who takes care of the
Maintenance.
Maintenance on the pond then, so to speak.
It'd be the homeowners association. It's it's no different than Lake Shore has a homeowners association. They um, they have their dues, they pay for road maintenance, um, they pay for certain things. They have low-lying areas if they're not owned by any individual in the HOA.
Just just for my my curiosity is, I would have read on it, it looks like it's supposed to hold like seven and a half acre feet of water, that pond.
Yeah.
How big is that, I guess?
Well.
How deep or what?
Yeah, so it's um, I don't have it in front of me, but I would say the pond is like three and a half, four acres itself, so it could have two, two and a half feet of water and and then that equivalent is the acre feet. It it's basically, um, when we talk acre feet, it's a volume. Instead of saying, um, you know, nine hundred thousand, some hundred gallons, we just say it's seven and a half acre feet.
I was just wondering how big that pond actually was, you know, how deep it was gonna be, is is it just gonna be?
The 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 berm on the west side is gonna be about three feet. So when we have a hundred-year storm, it's gonna hold um, the required amount of water and it'll have a foot of freeboard. So if you have a larger event, it's still gonna hold that, but if you have um, like an overtopping, because if we have large events, then, you know, you don't want a catastrophic failure, but you're retaining um, as required by the water resource board, the equivalent of a hundred-year rain event.
Why why would that not be included in the, in this um, subdivision, in this uh, lazy H eight second subdivision? Because it's part of the you you the water, the stormwater easement pond, because you say that stays egg.
Yeah, it's part of the, we're just not asking to rezone it because we don't have anything in the code that says you have to rezone a a vacant lot or a detention pond to any type of zoning. This is just a, this is just a zoning application to move, because it's all egg right now because it's a, it's a parcel that's like.
Okay, I I got you.
And I didn't know how to really word it. I mean, we're changing the zoning from egg, and I I just noticed on here I should have it R one too, right? Not residential, should be R one.
Um, it's R two, actually.
R two?
Yeah.
I'm just getting at that, this and, this property's being developed, and part of that development includes having to have this uh, water retention area.
Per our current ordinance.
Am I close to correct?
Yeah, we're required, as part of the new ordinance, is any development in the county is supposed to have a stormwater management plan. And based on that stormwater management plan, in this instance, they need a detention pond so that they don't increase the flow to downstream property.
So eventually that will be part of this, should be part of this rezoning process in the end.
But you can never, you can, they can never build on it. They have to leave that the
Correct.
The retention.
I I I get that, but if, I'm just going at, first off, for tax basis and because if we leave this egg, there's virtually no, it's gonna just fall off the tax rolls, this little bit of acreage, but it's part of this development. So I don't know how, I I don't even know how to ask the question properly, but this should become part of this development.
Under residential, you mean? Yeah, because you.
Whatever, it should become part of this development, not just left out there hanging as a piece of egg property.
Well, it's still part of the development. It's it's not planned to be sold. The homeowners association's gonna have to own it and maintain it. But there's no use for it because you can't build anything on it because that's remain a detention pond.
Soon as they own it, it should be not zoned egg anymore. It should be zoned part of their, whether it's commercial or.
Or would the developer just own it and not the HOA?
I I don't.
Because they own it now.
To me, it looks like the developer's skirting the tax basis on this piece of property. We'll just leave it egg because it's gonna be used for water, for these pieces of property as a water retention area. I don't even know how to properly say it. And while if you're developing it, you buy this whole piece and then you develop it according to the regulations. And even if you have uh, three acres, it gotta be a water pond, I don't care what you call it, duck pond, water pond.
I mean, under normal conditions, it's gonna be dry, but under storm events, it'll be pond, but I guess, I don't know anything in our code that would suggest that we need to.
One thing I just thought of now is it has to be ten acres to be egg. Is it contingent acres? Does he own other acres there or will it won't be the subdivisional?
Well, you got forty-three on what's remaining and then you got that six and a half there, but.
I know, but they're not.
They're not conjoined?
Yeah.
I'm not opposed to the plan, I'm just saying it kinda seems strange to me that[1661.01] I wanna develop a piece of property, but only those that I can put a building on, I wanna have rezoned. But a water pond that I have to build for these pieces of property, I don't want that rezoned because I can't ever do anything with it, so I wanna leave it as a ag. Well, yeah, because as ag, the tax basis for that are gonna be a whole lot less than if it were part of the subdivision. Yes, no?
I guess our code doesn't address it.
And even if you do, even if you do change it, I'm probably gonna have to give it an obsolescence, cause they can't do anything with it anyway.
So it, it could be zoned residential.
If that's what you want.
If that's what you want, I mean.
Or commercial. Well, probably residential, I don't know.
I mean, like I said, our code doesn't address, I know what you're saying.
Yeah, I think it should be included with the whole, the whole plot, not carved out separately. I don't know if I'm making sense or not, but I'm trying.
I know what you're getting at, I'm just.
You are.
Uh, you're making sense, it's just, uh, and I don't think they're opposed to zoning it anything. We just left it out because currently, so when this started. Um, they did the four uh lots, they did residential, and then um, the county went through the process to create an ordinance for the water resource board. And they are the ones that review the stormwater management, because we adopted stormwater management. But um, so we've fulfilled those requirements, and I guess as far as the rezoning. There was nothing in our codes that addressed, you know, what those detention ponds should be. If, if our codes say that you have to have at least ten acres to remain ag, then we're gonna have to rezone it either commercial or um residential. And that's up to the board, you know, the discretion.
Yeah, that's a state thing, not county.
Okay, so.
Does it need to go back to P and Z then?
No, because they, that, that's just a preliminary plat.
Right, but the rezone doesn't have to go back.
And we, no, we didn't um specify how much is residential or commercial, and actually, I didn't know how to word it, cause it's ag. Changing to residential and commercial and some staying ag, big parts staying ag.
Well, yeah, cause it's, and that one's over ten acres, that's forty-seven acres, cause it's still gonna be farmed.
So, no, we didn't specify.
My que- my question was, you know, in conjunction with what he's saying too, is like, I don't know what the codes are in P and Z or anything about um. The maintenance side of it, is it? As ag, is it uh more lenient to what you can do to take, to take care of this pond versus the res- resident, residential side, or are they the same, or, or, you know?
This is, this is new territory. We passed an ordinance to require stormwater management. But the county did not address any of the zoning questions you have and, and any changes, so. If, if we wanna make changes, we definitely can. Um, but they've been trying to do this development since twenty eighteen and the codes have changed on them numerous times. And at this point, they're just trying to, you know, rezone the lots that would be for sale. But if, if this board wants to either make it commercial or residential so that it fits within our code. I don't know how to address um, you know, the maintenance of it. Um, it's no different than any other development in the county. Um, if you have a homeowners association, if you have. A public well or a centralized drain field, that homeowners assi- association is gonna have to maintain it.
I understand.
And if they don't, then they're the ones that are in trouble, which is everybody that lives within that development.
My question though is like, when you're maintaining it, are the rules more stringent on the, on the residential side, or, or, or are they, are they the same as the ag side, or? Is there gonna be difference? I mean, because it's ag, we don't have to do this, or, you know, things are different out in the country than they are in, so in town, so to speak. I'm, you, I mean, you're, we're just talking a residential area, I mean, that's a, I don't, maybe we need to wait two weeks and think, you know, and talk about it a little more, or, I, I don't know.
Well, I mean, I.
I don't know that the county has regulations on residential or ag as far as upkeeping it.
Yeah, I don't think there's much.
I don't either, I'm just, I'm just asking this question.
We don't for any, I don't think we do for any, so that, it doesn't matter, cause there's no rules in there for it, in the ordinance.
Yeah, there's nothing in our ordinance that addresses that.
And you can't, you're not gonna be able to just table it and put them in, it's a whole process of changing the whole, whole ordinance. You know what I mean? You can't just.
So under, oh, node A, that's node A saying. On this, it says here drain field easement, and then there's a stormwater easement, drain field easement, it says uh, C node A. So is the drain field easement, was that gonna, was the proposal to leave that ag also?
It's part of that overall parcel, that drain field easement was in discussions with um Lake Shore Estates, which is. Five separate subdivisions, but they're all one community, they're all one homeowners association. There was some issues with drain fields in that development and as part of this. Because they were gonna have to leave this uh parcel open because of the detention. If those, um, if that subdivision needed a centralized drain field, they were gonna offer up this land to be able to be created into a drain field.
I just feel that we should, uh, both those pieces of property, we should um, be zoned commercial. Because they are going to be used for these commercial properties and this residential properties apparently. To be able to develop that. Um, if it were, you know, outside, like over here, the remaining acreage, that's not getting rezoned. That's gonna stay ag.
That's gonna stay ag.
Which I don't have a problem with at all.
Field disband, so.
And that, you know, I, I would say if that would be the same, if this wouldn't be touched, this uh stormwater easement and this drain field easement. Then I'd have no problem with leaving it ag also, but it's gonna be used for these properties. So I think it should be um included in the, in the zoning. And I don't know if we can just make that change here, if that has to.
Well, I, I don't know if, if you want it specifically in there, then you just need to, I, I mean, I don't, make it in your motion, I suppose?
Make it in your motion, then she'd have to retype the sheet for us to sign, but, I mean.
Or, or, you know, if they don't, if they don't do it on their final plat, then you're not gonna per, you're not going to approve their final plat if he doesn't, you know what I mean?
Okay, so we could approve this today?
The way it is, and then if, then you just won't approve their final plat if he doesn't change into commercial instead of ag, right?
Right.
Instead of rewording all this. I mean, I do have to reword this to R two, cause I, I just have residential in my head, cause that's what the AS four hundred is, not separated R one, R two. But I would think it'd be easier just to, if you don't put it the way that they want it on your final plat, you're, they're not gonna prove it.
Well, the final plat usually doesn't distinguish.
Oh, it doesn't?
No.
Doesn't, won't have it on there, the residential and the?
Typically, we don't, but, I mean, we could put a note on there and say, these lots are, are, you know, are zoned commercial or residential. I mean, typically zoning and uh final plats are two different things, because somebody could buy one of those commercial lots and say, I don't wanna do commercial, I wanna come in for a rezoned residential.
But then they would, oh.
You know what, right? Like if somebody bought one of those commercial lots and said, I don't want commercial, I want residential, they could come in for a rezone.
Yes, you can request that. You can request it.
Well, if you're, if he'd have to come in and rezone it, then don't, don't you think that you would have to have it? Which, which, if it's either residential or commercial at the time you do the plat? Cause why would they have to rezone it if it could be anything?
Well, so based on our codes, this is, this is our process.
Okay, now this is my first subdivision, since I'm a doctor, now I'm getting confused.
Yeah, so, this is uh, we're, we're just following the codes as they're written for Mercer County. Um, typically, when I do have development somewhere else, um, we do the final plat and then in conjunction with that, we do the rezone. Our codes say you do the rezone and then prior to the final plat. It can happen either way, but um, they don't, they work together, but they're not mutually exclusive. Because you can always change zoning on a parcel that you own, as long as you meet the codes. So when we, when we did this, as far as the water resource board goes, there was um, interest in possible some of these being commercial lots. You know, maybe a restaurant or a fuel station or something like that. And the, on the water, stormwater management side, um, we require more detention for commercial lots than we do for residential lots. So if you have some zone commercially and then somebody says, no, I don't want commercial, I wanna go to residential. We have additional capacity in our design on the water resource board. Now, if somebody would come in and say, hey, I wanna turn those seven lots that are residential into commercial. Then P and Z and the county commission and the water resource board would have to look at it and say. Well, do you have to increase the size of your deten- detention pond, or do you have to change your, your stormwater management plan? That would be justifications to say no on the rezone for a higher um, density zoning. But as far as the, in this instance, as far as the rezone goes. These are gonna be the layout, the preliminary, preliminary plat was approved as this is. The final plat's just gonna have, um, basically, these are easements, these are the lots we're creating. And then this will all be recorded at the same time so that everybody knows what the zoning is for each lot. Typically, on final plats, you don't write on there what the zoning is, because fifteen years from now, if somebody buys one of those commercial lots and does residential, they're gonna rezone it. And then you're gonna have misleading information on the plat versus what the true zoning is.
Well, like I said, I've got no, the only issue I have with this is lot two, block three. I'd like to put a condition on it that we need to research what we can do with that. If, if we could, if we can even zone it commercial, and we probably can't even do that. But I'd like to see the, some, something where it's not just left as ag, because it's part of the development, but other than that, I have, wouldn't have any other issues.
If you wanted to address it today, you could say you approved the zoning and you want lot um.
Lot two, block three.
Lot two, block three to be commercial as well, so the board would have essentially made it commercial.
I'd be more comfortable with that. Cause it's part of the development, it's.
Agreed, and it's got, it's got rules for this pond.
Yeah, because they have to have this pond for these lots, well, then it should be part of the development.
And then who do I, who do I bill for it, for that lot?
Well, it's still gonna all be owned by, by Hafners.
Right.
Um, and then.
They would just have to include that in HOH?
Yeah, so, so when you would create the um HOA, the homeowners association, they would essentially deed that over to the homeowners association.
Yes.
Whoever lives out there is part of that homeowners association. So any dues or fees or requirements to maintain would be the responsibility of those people that live out there.
Yes.
In the HOA, and you'd have to own property to be part of that HOA.
Do we need to make a motion to change it, or to, to uh, not change it, but to include it, or?
To have that amendment, I believe.
Yeah, you would just say.
Make a motion to approve the.
The rezone, and you would include that um lot two, block three as commercial as well.
Right. To approve the temporary use permit six oh seven with uh, condition that lot two, block three be rezoned as commercial.
It's not six oh seven.
Yeah, it's rezoning twenty-two dash eleven dash oh one.
Yeah. And I do, I need.
Oh geez, sorry, I'm way.
And I need to change residential to R two, so I don't know if you need to make that.
Thanks for the correction. There we go. Thank you. That's still it.
And Jean, did you hear Cindy's?
Sorry, yes.
Jean, are you, are you making a motion? Because you need to change residential, where I have residential to R two, cause I messed that up.
Yeah, I'd like to, I would, I would uh, move to, oh, I'm chair, I shouldn't make a motion right now.
I'll move uh, to approve uh zoning case twenty-two dash eleven oh one with additional amendment to uh. Additionally adding lot, lot two, block three as residential or commercial, excuse me.
Do I have a second to that motion?
A second.
Any further discussion? I didn't write down, oh, I know. Uh, Rick, how do you vote?
I'll vote aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Jean will vote aye. There, you can have your chair back now.
Did you second that?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Sorry, my head's kind of.
It's a lot, yeah. We all need some coffee now.
So before we move on, I'll just say, like, as we go through this, at either this level or the planning and zoning level. If we find issues with our codes, we should try to adjust them. You know, I'm hoping that there's more development in this county to come. It's, it's been a while since we've done it, so. If, if we want things a certain way, we should have them in our codes.
Don't disagree.
So, moving on to road stuff. Ken and Charlie.
Morning.
Good morning, Ken.
Morning.
Morning, Charlie.
Morning.
Charlie, didn't we talk about donuts last time?
You're not wrong, yeah.
We did.
You know, those nurses, they like their blood sugar at a certain level.
You just let it get a little low and then you get a little delirious. Go ahead, Ken.
First thing up is uh, road policy declaration. That is a yearly thing that we sign, have the commissioners uh review it and then uh sign it, or I guess approve it. Um, I don't know if you guys have a copy in front of you?
We do.
Yep. Okay. If you guys got any questions, let me know, but this is kinda the guideline that we follow.
I, I guess the question I have on it is a couple of things, um. One, I did a lot, was doing a lot of reading, and I ran across the portion in the century code that uh stated about plowing roads for school buses. I don't know. The extent of it, I, I, I just read, I don't, I need to, would like to have more time to find out more about what it was, this wording on it was. And the other thing I, I would like to do is um, take a little time and sit down with Jean and Ken and Elroy or whatever. I'd like to review this and see if we can be more efficient in what we're doing, rather than just putting a stamp on it and moving on. I'd just like to take the time to look at it. And see if we can do better. And we can bring it back, and we can stay with the policy we're using until, till we bring it back and, but I would like to look at it to. See what uh, if we can do things better in the future with this.
And we don't have to decide that today, do we, to adopt this? In other words, I all agree with Ken, uh, with um, Rick?
I g- I guess this is our internal policy. Um, the road department's not gonna do anything different.
Right.
Um, and until you tell them you want something different, so um, if you guys have questions about it, you know, we can definitely bring it up at the next meeting.
Sure.
I mean, like I said, the road department's not gonna do anything different.
Right.
Until we ask them or address it.
I'd just like to have time to sit down with Ken and go over this and, you know, Jean and I and Ken, probably Elroy or whatever. Just go over this and look at, you know, different pieces of it, just to make sure what we can do, you know, we can do, if we can do better in some areas, if not. Continue with what we're doing. I mean, we're not gonna lose anything.
Okay. Any, any issues, Ken?
No.
Okay. You think you guys will be ready by the next meeting? Should we just have that on the next agenda?
Yeah, just put it on the next agenda.
Okay, so we'll postpone the road policy until the February fifteenth meeting? What do you got next, Ken?
Um, utility permit seventeen forty-six, uh, Mike Scherrato, he wants to uh. We're underneath uh, two portions of the road, County Road twelve and sixty-third avenue southwest, and then sixty-third avenue southwest. It's uh, down like uh, Cost, live down there, Marty Reich, south of Beale, right south of the uh, the mine. In fact, this property is on the sou- southern portion of the mine, mine, it's right north of uh, well, Reichs and then um. Which Unruh lives down there, it's one of the, Unruh's.
Kenny.
Yeah, right north of his place, trying to get water up to that, kinda to the northeast of uh, Kenny Unruh's there. So they'd cross right to the south of um, um Reichs, and then follow that up on the west side of that section. Cross road at that intersection, and then go straight west on the north side of the road there, on their property, up to that pasture tap. So it's two locations, two borings, and it's cased, so.
And it's real water?
Yes, yep.
Okay, it's to get rural wa- the permit is to get rural water to a piece of property?
Pasture, yep, yeah.
Okay.
Pasture tap.
Okay, is there a motion?
Any objections with that, Ken, or not?
No, I don't.
Is there a motion to approve utility permit seventeen forty-six?
I'll so move.
Motion by Rick, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Liza? Change any discussion? Seeing none. Rick?
I'll vote aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Jean?
Aye.
I'll vote aye.
No, I'll sign that in a bit here.
Okay.
Next is uh, MC eight hundred cutback asphalt purchase. Um, that's the, what we use, it's the um, for crack sealing. And it's to fill our bulk tank. I had met with Charlie to see if I'd called that guy down Fargo, and what they deal with is more, it's a little bit different than what we have, they actually, well, they cut theirs out. The cracks and then they put like a, it's almost like a s- like, it's, yeah, rubberized, which we wouldn't. You know, I told him to give us a quote, what it would be when he's up in the area, if they were to do, but what we do is we do half of our roads every year, so we alternate every two years, you know? So, anyway, this is, this is made in, I think it's Laurel or around Billings, Montana, CHS is who does it. But the reason I put this on, every year it has to get approved by the commissioners, we budgeted thirty-two thousand for it this year. Okay, um, for twenty-five ton, we're looking at uh thirty-six thousand, four hundred and forty dollars and seventy-five cents. We budgeted thirty-two thousand. And so we're about four thousand over, but last year, that same product was one thousand forty-three dollars, that's how much it went up in a year. So you really can't budget, I mean, over four. So you really can't budget, I mean, over four hundred dollars per ton difference. You know, and two years ago, we were in kind of the same boat, but it's like, that's how much it went in up in addition. And they gave, you know, a thirty-two ton would be forty-five thou- we would have enough room to put thirty-two ton, but I'm thinking we just go at the twenty-five ton. We should have enough to do our roads, you know, the fifty miles, or give or take what we do this year with that thirty-two, or with the twenty-five ton, in addition to what we have in the tank, we should be okay, so. But it's gonna be, like I say, a little over four, forty-four hundred dollars and seventy-five cents over what we budgeted for, but like I say.
Even at the twenty-five ton?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Did you, uh, find out any other, we were talking about?
That's what I was talking about. That's what that other company was, and there's no one else that has it.
Nobody close enough that'll make it work up, worthwhile or whatever.
Yeah, and that's just.
That's because of the price of oil.
I think we're gonna be running into this in a few areas.
Great.
But I appreciate you bringing it up to us and.
So it'd be for that twenty-five tons, it'd be back at thirty-six dollars and four forty, seventy-five.
Okay. Um, is there a motion to approve the MC eight hundred, um, purchase?
I'll move that we approve the purchase, uh, to thirty-six, four seventy-five.
Okay, motion by Rick to approve the purchase, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Liza? Any discussion? Um, can this be like, um, bid in the fall or anything like that for the next year, if we can contract for it, or?
I could possibly do it. The reason why we do it in the winter time is because of, uh, frost laws too, because if, if we do get that thirty-two ton, then they run into, you know, if it's, that's why we try to get delivered in the winter time, but I guess it's possible to do it.
Well, what I'm saying is like, if we could maybe potentially get a bid in the fall for delivery in the winter.
Okay.
You know, but I mean.
Right.
You know.
Fall price might be a little better than the winter price?
Yeah, because it's kind of what we do with like, uh, sprays and stuff like that, is we preorder it.
And for budgeting purposes too.
Budgeting purposes, yeah.
Yeah, I'll check into it, see what they say. I mean, for this comment, for twenty-four, we go.
Already.
Yeah, so.
I use for some of our prairie dog money, huh? Over budget already.
I, I wonder if that would qualify. I mean, it is for road.
It's for roads.
It should. But I mean, that might be where we.
Might have to look at that.
So, any other discussion on the purchase of the MC eight hundred? Seeing none. Rick?
I vote aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Jean?
Aye.
All vote aye. That motion passes.
Next is Hazen Shop at the crossroads here. Uh, the door, the overhead door and the opener, I'd gotten two, uh, quotes, one from Midwest Doors. It's an eighteen by fourteen door. Well, they call it a seventeen by ten, but must say eighteen by fourteen, inside a door with the opener. They come in mileage ten thousand, two hundred and nineteen even, and then I got one out of Dickinson, Liberty Doors, um, for the same type of door and the opener, and the mileage there at nine thousand, thirty-five dollars. So a little over a thousand dollars difference. Plus.
What, what did we do, like, when I first got on the board here, there was a, a bill that approved for a door opener. Can we use that anymore, or what, what, what would?
Well, we had.
How would that tie together with this?
Because the opener that was in there had, that, that's, we couldn't get the door open and the opener wasn't working, so we had to call those guys up here to get that, so we'd get that door, and so we'd get the piece of equipment when it's twenty-some below, and took them four or five days to get up there, so we had to bring that over to the shop in Beulah, but that's what, and that, that opener is old, so this would replace an opener, the opener and the door.
So that other one was just a repair bill that we were.
Yes, yep.
Correct, yeah, and it was kind of an emergency repair, because you needed to get the equipment out and. And, uh, where was the first one from? The second one you said Midwest?
And Liberty Doors are on Dickinson.
So neither one of these are in county?
No.
Okay, yeah, but I'm just asking like, if we would have, you know, sometimes we do local, but they're both out of county, so it's kind of a horse.
There's anyone that does doors.
No, I'm just saying.
Not that I know of, anyway.
Did either one of them give the option to split mileage? I know Midwest Doors is up here like all the time.
Well, that's what Midwest Doors, you know, because the mileage is a hundred and seventy-five dollars.
Okay, so that's not enough to make a difference.
They were at ten thousand, two nineteen, and, uh, Liberty Doors was nine thousand, thirty-five dollars.
So it's not that close.
Right.
No.
It's about a horse apiece for mileage for each of them.
So as far as quality of the door, which one was a better door? I mean.
They're both good doors. I mean, they're both commercial doors.
Okay. What would the commission like to do?
Well, from our point of view, I guess the nine thousand dollar door.
That's what I would say.
If it's according to Ken, there's no difference, so.
Right.
And that's all inclusive of labor and all of that?
Yes, and the mileage, yep, and the opener, and the, uh, remote.
Well, but if you need a motion, I'd make a motion to approve the Liberty Door, or Liberty out of Dickinson to install the door.
Okay, motion by Jean to approve the Liberty Quote, second by Rick.
Yep.
Any other discussion? Seeing none. Jean?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
All vote aye. That motion passes. What do you got next, Ken?
Uh, select an RFP committee, and this is for that Spring Creek Bridge on County seventeen, west of Beulah, in between Beulah and Zapp.
Okay.
Um, talked with, uh, Sam yesterday. We have two, um, engineer firms that are, you know, put their proposals in, so. And this is, if you remember right, this is that, to use that COVID money, um, to do preliminary engineering on that structure over there. So the RFP, um, my thoughts are if, uh, you know, a couple of the commissioners and myself, you know, set up the interview process with these two firms, and I know we could probably set a date, or sooner the better, I'm thinking.
Right.
Yeah.
You know? So I don't know what you guys' thoughts are, if you guys want to choose two people and myself, and probably maybe set up a date, and we'll have to kind of see if it works with those guys too, I guess, but.
I mean, for consistency, do we just do the two that hold the portfolio?
You could, yeah.
Unless you two are opposed, but.
I think that would be the best way to go, if you guys are okay with that.
I'm, I'm, I'm in favor of if, if there's anything that we're not engineered, say we're gonna miss anything that we need to do, so we can, we just do a committee right now to, uh, we can ask questions after that too, right?
Yeah, yeah, I'm okay with that.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, I'd be, I'd be all in favor of that.
Okay, um, so with that, um, I'll put together a committee of Jean and Rick to review the RFP, uh, submittals. Is there a motion to approve that appointment of that committee?
I motion to approve the committee of Rick and Jean.
And, and then Ken would be part of it.
And Ken.
Yeah, sorry, I forgot that, yeah.
And Ken. Like, wait a minute, we need Ken?
Uh, motion by Jamie, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Liza? Any discussion? Seeing none. Jamie?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Jean?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
All vote aye. That motion passes for that committee. Um, as part of this process, um, I'm gonna excuse myself from any decision-making in it, because I work for one of the firms that submitted, so I don't want to have any influence on it, so that committee, you guys will come back with a recommendation to the, to the commission, and in that decision, I will recuse myself from, from the session and motion on that, so. Any other questions on, on the RFP process or anything?
Should, should we try to set a date?
Yeah, we just put the committee.
Right, but I mean, I was thinking on the commission day.
Uh, time?
Starting next week, I'm open, but this week, rest of this week, I'm pretty well booked. I think you can, any day, any day next week will work for me that I know of. I do have a little time, I guess, uh, Friday morning.
You got a time in mind?
No. I was thinking during, if we could do it during a commission day or something like that, but, you know, after a commission meeting, maybe.
That would be the fifteenth.
That's what we've done in the past.
Yeah.
That'd be the fifteenth. Do we need it sooner?
Not really, no. I don't think so. I guess.
Today won't work for me.
No, it would be.
Can we, can we work it somewhat this, uh, work it in with this, uh, review thing too? On the, the policy? And when we sit down with that or not?
I'll just come up with a few days and we'll just kind of shoot it out there and see what works for everyone, because like I say, Interstate was one, and Catamaras Lane Jackson was the other, so I'll have to kind of see what works. Hopefully, we can do it all on the same timeframe, you know, with the.
I'm pretty, pretty open next week also, except for the time that you'll select.
Okay.
That's about how it'll go. But I don't have anything, I should be able to meet almost any time.
Okay. So you three just kind of coordinate and then coordinate with the.
Then we'll have to bring back their recommendation back to the board, right?
Yep.
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 Okay. Anything else, Ken?
Uh, we had, we're gonna do that notice, uh, permission to bid, where we always do our propane, uh, fu- uh, fuel, gas, oil, grease, common excavation, and I think if, um, I thought it was April fifth is the, um, I can look on the calendar, to open the bids.
Is that done?
That's the annual bidding.
Okay, the agenda, so, um.
I think it's April fifth is to open them, and then we would re, uh, you know, we always review them, and then come back on the nineteenth, I think it was, and, uh, for approval, recommendations and approval. Yeah, the April fifth, and then, uh, like I say, close the bids April fifth at ten o'clock.
I'd say it's usually ten, right?
Yep, yep, so, and then Rachel will get those out to all the bidders, you know, with all the information they need, and then they need to have it either at our office or, I think, they usually take them over here, but by ten o'clock is when they open them up.
Yeah, essentially, we, we advertise it, and then at our April fifth meeting at ten AM, we would do a motion to close accepting of bids, and then we review them and then, um, we tabulate them and then get approval at the next meeting.
Yep.
Right.
So this would be just permission, so we can start that process.
Is there a motion to approve, Ken, to go out with, um, advertisement for bid? Um, it would be bids due April fifth at ten AM?
I move that we do that.
Okay, motion by Rick to approve the notice for bids. Um, they would be due April fifth at ten AM at the courthouse. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Jean. Any discussion? Seeing none. Rick?
Aye.
Jean?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
All vote aye. That motion passes. Anything else, Ken?
I think Charlie has some.
Yeah, I got some.
Updates and discussions on the project, I guess. Just being in Mercer twenty-seven, school delay project budget. And the other being Bridge twenty-nine, North three four twenty.
Twenty-seven, North Hazen.
Right away negotiations with, um, this she was on. So there are two documents in between you guys that I wanted to discuss.
Thanks, Charlie.
Yep.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Thank you.
Yep. I'll run through these once I submit them. So the first document, I'll touch on, I guess, the cost estimate that we provided for Mercer twenty-seven, updated with some of the design after the design's kind of gotten to the point where it's at. We looked into your funding options, and I know, been reviewing the budget for how that was established. Um, I think this is actually gonna work out pretty well, but ultimately, I guess the commission, you guys are gonna make a decision on how you prefer to approach this project from the funding perspective. Um, so the overall estimated project costs after, um, we included some milling along the edges of the roadway because the slough was pretty steep on that road, so as a safety measure, we tried to eliminate that, so that people would tire cotton, or just, people would just, you know, swing off the road. Some of those changes that we made, uh, the project cost, including, um, uh, mobilization and bonding, was right around three point nine eight million. And this is twenty-seven North of Hazen up to, uh, eighteen oh six. So there's really several options that the county has to pay for this project, all things considered. We have DOT federal aid available to us. Um, and we also have hospital fifteen oh five money available to us. And then, of course, we have our prairie dog funds that are available, all three of which can be utilized on the same project if you guys so wish. So what I did was I broke down the different options, and, uh, I think we actually over budgeted on this project, if I recall correctly, looking at some of the budgets we had set up for, for, that you guys approved. Not by a lot, but I think it was over budgeted based on how the costs were understood and anticipated at that time when the budget was established. So there are a lot of different ways to skin this gap, but my opinion, um, as your consultant, would be to utilize, um, the, the North Dakota DOT federal aid as much as possible, because there's no guarantee that those monies will be there for you after the next legislative by end, or whatever, they, you know, refill them to coffers, as soon as speak. So if you borrow ahead, you're not missing out on that money. And what I mean by borrow ahead is, we have the option to borrow ahead up to a period of three years. We roughly get about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars allocated to us annually. And we have, uh, I did this conservatively, I will confirm this with Brian Hughes at the state, we had one point three million-ish in, uh, in our fund, um, as of last year. It might be one point five million right now, but if we borrow ahead, then that would put us over the fifty-one percent threshold that is required on this project to be federal aid in order to avoid Title VI issues. So I don't know if any of you are real familiar with Title VI compliance, but currently, my, to my understanding, the county, um, does not have any Title VI program or compliance set up to where if we utilize federal aid, we fall underneath the state's umbrella for Title VI compliance. They're the liaison to the federal money, the Federal Reserve, so we would operate underneath their Title VI compliance umbrella, which is what we want to do, right? So how we do that is, the only way that's allowable is if fifty-one percent of the project costs are covered by federal aid, eligible monies that we ran through the state. North Dakota Prairie Dog Fund and House Bill fifteen oh five dollars do not count towards this fifty-one percent federal aid cost share, because those monies are, those are given, those are ran directly through, those are given directly to Mercer County, so they can't act as the fifty-one percent, or part of that fifty-one percent coverage, I guess, for the project cost. So ideally, the best way to handle this, I laid out three different options. The second one you'll see on the second page, has the word recommended next to it. Um, that would be where we utilize prairie dog monies with, with essentially no road budget, dollars being used on this project at all, because we'd have enough money to cover it between, um, fifteen oh five money and the, uh, DOT federal aid. So the tricky part with the DOT federal aid is it requires a twenty percent cost share, local match. However, the, um, prairie dog funds are allowed to be used as local match dollars. So the county, if you wish, you can utilize prairie dog money to act as one hundred percent of your local match on that project. Uh, and ultimately, that, what that is, it's still coming out of your guys' budget, because I understand prairie dog money is part of your budget, however, that, when I, when I mean by budget dollars, I'm talking about road department budget, well, however you guys drive that and came up with that. So I, I understand the prairie dog's technically part of the road department budget, but it's, I'm, in my mind, as I'm trying to explain this, they're two separate things. So.
It's within the budget, but it has to be used for road contracting or.
Yeah.
Rehab, yeah.
And that, that would, that would, uh, basically alleviate a couple of things. Um, you would still roughly have one point four million dollars in prairie dog funds left over after this project that you could utilize on a project, say, the airport road, or something to pay for that project. And to my knowledge, I'll double check on this, but if you utilize prairie dog funds, I don't believe that, um, Title VI compliance comes into play due to the type of monies that is. It's a state fund, is what it is, so, uh, that doesn't come into play. In addition to that, you. In addition to that, you utilize your fifteen oh five dollars, whereas if you chose to not use the fifteen oh five, house school fifteen oh five money on this project and use it on a different project, for example, say you, we wanted to just pay for this project with North Dakota DOT federal aid and prairie dog money and that's it, and we'll save our fifteen oh five money. The problem you run into that is whenever you do utilize that money on another project, you will, you will more than likely have to have Title VI compliance in place as a county. Which, um, I'm not entirely privy to the entire process, but I understand it's a little bit, uh, cumbersome to deal with, so. Uh, it's ideal to, to operate underneath the state's Title VI compliance umbrella. And that's why, since we're allowed to use both of these funds on one project, the both of these funds, meaning fifteen oh five money and the DOT federal aid, it's our recommendation that you guys, uh, approach the project in that manner because then, uh, you avoid the Title VI compliance and you're still using those funds effectively.
And the, and the fifteen oh five is treated separately because the state got that money from the federal government and then distributed it amongst the counties, correct?
Yeah, but they're being distributed directly to the county, so that's why they're acting differently than, they're not going technically through the state DOT.
Okay, gotcha.
If they were going through the state, then we would, it would be no different than the DOT federal aid and it would count towards our fifty-one percent. So the reason we have to borrow ahead is because fifty percent of this project cost is roughly one point nine five million and we have about one point three million available in DOT federal aid. So we would be borrowing ahead approximately three years to go from one point three to one point nine five. And I, I use the words borrow ahead, that's no, we're not borrowing money, we're not paying interest on this, it's literally, we are requesting that the state allocate money to us ahead of schedule, so we're guaranteed that money. And we actually recommend this to our clients all the time because then they're, they're getting that money. There's no guarantee that money's there in two years. So you may as well get it while you can.
And, and the reason we have some in that bank, so to speak, is because we haven't used it.
Quite sometimes, probably five to six years, if I, if I guess, they haven't touched that bucket of money.
And we don't get penalized or anything happens to us if all of a sudden they don't have money in that bucket?
No, you're just, you're in the, I mean, you're, you're in the hole, you're negative, so when they allocate the two fifty annually, it'll just move you closer to
Zero.
To getting above, out of the hole, so to speak. Which is common, it's not, um, there's a lot of counties that do this, um, because for the reason I just explained, they want to make sure they get that money while it's there.
And so the three eight fifty, that's actually all federal funding, so that puts us over that fifty-one percent that we need it to be, right? And then other costs you're stating would be good to use the prairie dog funds would only be that one thou, one hundred and thirty-seven thousand from the prairie dog fund would be taken out?
Are you looking at the recommended option? Are you looking at the recommended option?
Yes.
Okay, so the, in this, in this option, the way we have it broken out would be if you were to use, uh, prairie dog money to pay for the, uh, local match, act, the local match of the fifteen oh five funds and the federal aid, the North Dakota DOT federal aid, and then the remaining project cost of that one thirty-seven, you subtract that from the two point two, that's how much you have left on the prairie dog monies.
But we are reaching that fifty-one percent of federal aid.
Correct.
So we're covered on that, yeah, correct?
Because when you borrow ahead, I, you notice that North Dakota DOT federal aid borrowed ahead three years, that's what I, I put in there, that's, that two point zero three, that's, uh, that's essentially, um, fifty-one percent, that number, two point zero three million, that's fifty-one percent of the project cost. That figure. The total project cost would still on the front page of three point nine eight million. So that, that's the formula for that, that's all it is.
Now I get it.
Yeah, we would borrow ahead, make sure that we've covered the fifty-one percent and then we know we're good to go. What does the rest look like after that fifty-one percent? That's what that specific recommended model is showing.
Okay.
Yep.
I was not realizing about the three point nine over here.
Sure.
I was trying to do it off of the six.
And keep in mind too, I mean, that obviously for, for, we always operate that way, that, that total estimated project cost is conservative for a reason. We don't want to put you guys in a situation where you get bids and then they're way high or something, so that's what we try to do there. But realistically, I mean, we don't want to be super conservative either.
Do we have to make this decision prior to bids or is this?
The, we, well, yeah, which, the reason we do this, the state needs to know that the county's essentially on board with the decision to, because in order for us to get a PCN and a state project number, we have to show them how we're planning on paying for it.
Okay.
Okay.
So essentially, we would approve whichever one of these options looks like the recommended option. That would be our mechanism to pay for it. And then based on how the bids come in, these numbers will adjust as long as we
Yeah.
have the fifty-one percent, you know, so the, it doesn't lock us into this, but it essentially says if we accept the bids and go forward with the project, this is how we anticipate on paying for it.
So just so you guys understand, originally, the, the way the budget was looked at, um, when it was built was, was with the thinking, thought process of option one being the way this thing was gonna be paid. So, you know, I, that out of pocket budget cost is not, uh, is not prairie dog money. So that's money that you guys physically budgeted, you know, essentially for the project. Whereas option two, that goes away because we're gonna use fifteen oh five money and, and put in some of our prairie dog money. That you guys receive.
Okay.
So it's not, you're still spending the money, it's just prairie dog money now.
Right.
With that option.
Which is essentially what the prairie dog fund was made for.
Yeah.
Correct.
And it's allowable to all be used on the same project. So to me, to us, that made, that was the home run. I mean, that made the most sense. Now, option three is, is really just utilizing nothing but prairie dog money and DOT federal aid. So you would save your fifteen oh five money, which we do not recommend because then that would put you into Title VI compliance, as used on the road when you do the side keys and fifteen oh five money. For that reason, we, so we don't think, we would like it that you guys.
Yeah, and we don't have those restrictions on the prairie dog money, so using up the fifteen oh five makes sense.
If all that works being done for you by the state, why not? I mean, I'm not saying we shouldn't have Title VI compliance, but it's something we should look at as a county. And Brian Fuchs recommended that, but, um, now's not the time to fight that battle on this project, in my opinion. Maybe take our time with that, get that stuff figured out.
Okay.
I guess I would just be seeking your approval, or i- if you want to make it today, if not, I suppose we could maybe at the next meeting, but, um, on the option to go, and so we can let the state know, um, because that's gonna be part of, that's all part of our environmental documents we submitted and, uh, we still haven't gotten reviews back on those yet, but.
From the state.
From the state, yeah.
Well, I guess from my standpoint, I'd like to use as much federal money as possible and state funds and if we're not tapping into our mill levy or, you know, totally using up all our prairie dog money on one, one project, it gives us the most flexibility for other projects.
It's really a great use of the fifteen oh five.
Guess we'll have no problem using the prairie dog money.
Nope.
Nope.
That, the prairie dog money to just, uh, you know, keep in mind too, Jean, so if, what we have left there is, I mean, if we have, I know we've talked about like the airport road. That's based on our estimations that there's enough prairie dog money there to cover that project in its entirety remaining after this. So if we still won't consider doing that, I think we should, you know, I mean, that's a good use of the money as well. Depending on how you guys choose to use that prairie dog money, that's not a bad option.
Well, I think Ken spent some of it already.
Yeah.
Four grand out of two point five million, I would say, that's right.
The other option that you would have, depending on how our application shakes out for, um, the Mercer seventeen bridge, right, for construction, the back end of it, you know, devil's advocate, we get denied, we don't get money there, you could consider, I believe prairie dog funds would be allowable on something like that, I think, so. You might want to play the waiting game on the prairie dog funds, the remainder of it, I'm assuming.
That's what I was wondering, it's like.
Yeah.
Which one do you pick here?
But that would cover that project cost even more likely, so you got, you know, there are a couple of projects that you could look at and consider with that money.
Do we need a motion?
Need a motion to recommend which funding option?
I move we recommend, uh, moving forward, funding option two.
Okay, motion by Rick to proceed with funding option two as outlined. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Jamie. Any discussion? Seeing none?
No.
Okay, Rick?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Jean?
Aye.
I'll vote aye as well. That motion passes.
Okay, and then the very last thing I have, I'll try to be quick, so, uh, Sheila Colanick, I had conversations with her, she did reach out to us regarding the Mercer Bridge twenty-nine one thirty-four twenty structure replacement project. She was requesting, um, in addition to essentially what the, uh, offer that has been put on the table on behalf of the county, which is six hundred dollars for permanent easement and the three hundred dollars for temporary, uh, easement. An additional sum of three thousand dollars is her request for this project. And her primary reasoning for that was, um, she's been battling and dealing with several things that concern, this project creates more concern for her regarding, um, one being the weeds and weed control, which we already have a, actually an agreement in place for that too, uh, that she's going to agree to, but, um, as a result of this project, she, she's concerned that that's gonna be a burden on her in the future. And then on top of that, uh, state, I guess, um, safety, she wanted to put up cameras because her quonset recently got broken into and she wanted to utilize maybe some of these, uh, monies to, um, help protect her property and improve her security system on her property.
Okay, so she's asking for a total of three thousand dollars for the easement?
The three thousand dollars would be in addition to the nine hundred dollars that we, we, the standard monetary compensation that the county offers up for right away acquisition. And in addition to the three, three years of weed.
Weed control, that's not on here, though.
That's a separate agreement, right? The weed control is separate.
I understand that, but the other, how much? Six hundred dollars or something?
Nine hundred total.
Nine hundred? So it's actually thirty-nine hundred that we're gonna be paying.
Correct, that's handled through specific paperwork through the state that she signs. This is a, this is no different than the, uh, uh, what's his name?
Up by John Shield there?
No, no, on, on, uh, Hazen Bay Road. Oh, Du- De- De-.
Oh, Duane, Duane Chua.
Uh, agreement that we put together on the side on his behalf in order for him to agree to the easement acquisition for, yeah, for that bridge. He wanted something that I, the county agreed to do for him, so that, we're, we're handling it in the same manner, I guess.
Well, just, the wording is a little, to me is a little confusing because when I read this, we're paying three thousand dollars, but we're actually paying like thirty-nine hundred dollars.
Correct.
But one agreement.
Cause they're separate contracts.
Yeah, one's through the DOT, one's through the county, correct?
Yeah, I see your confusion, but you're, you're not, you're right, we, but we are paying. This, the purpose of this agreement is just for her additional wishes of monetary compensation.
Okay. And based on what you said, it's not really outline of what we've done in the past?
Um, well.
Yes and no, but.
Yeah, it just depends on the commission, really, what they're willing to do. I mean, uh, overall project cost, this is, I mean, I understand, I mean, it's not necessarily like it's a deal breaker, it's a pretty small drop in the bucket in order scheme of things, but, um, you guys already provided monetary compensation offer, offering, uh, through the state regulated, it's that, um, Uniform Act and all the paperwork that we have to fill out with that. The state requires, so that, that was, that's already out there on the table.
Mm-hmm.
At the box.
And we were kind of looking at other counties where they had like a standard, uh, right of way acquisition. Or we haven't adopted anything.
Fifteen hundred dollars per acre, no, we, I think we adopted.
Oh, did we?
It was fifteen hundred dollars per acre and, and if it's less than, uh, I think if it's less than, I forget the acre, it's actually, if it's less than acre, then it's a minimum, no matter what, it has to be at least a minimum of six hundred dollars for permanent right of way and three hundred dollars for temporary.
Okay.
So if you, you know, if you're less than that, then no matter what, you're paying, you're paying nine hundred dollars. So her total acreage equals like a total of, at that rate, I don't like two hundred bucks or something, but we have to give them nine hundred dollars. And that's usually recommended by the state, they have that clause in there.
Thoughts?
The ultimate, uh, what's on the table for Sheila is, you're correct, essentially thirty-nine hundred dollars and, uh, a total of basically four years, so if you consider during construction, uh, weed control for her for the easement, the right of way. And I, I do think you would agree with this.
What's that?
Within the project area, for the weed control, not
Within the project area.
Other parts of her property, just within that.
Yeah, cause her property is.
Way to the south there and east.
Upstream from the project, so.
No, I apologize, I think we extended it one hundred feet beyond the project.
Whichever direction, but we know it's, that her property's upstream, so.
Yeah.
I would have a tough time with weeds that are half a mile upstream from this project. We go take care of those, but I guess to get this project going.
She requested, and I said, well, the, the most I can, I guess I can present it to the commission, I can't guarantee what the commission will say, I mean, I didn't make any promises, obviously.
Be careful what I say.
Yeah.
I make a motion to pay her the, the three thousand dollars.
Okay, motion by Jean to accept the monetary agreement for the additional three thousand dollars. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Jamie. Any discussion? Any discussion?
I don't know, I, I, I just think it's. What would you, what would you recommend on this? You've, you've been visiting with her.
Well, it depends on how you look at it, because we've been in these situations before where we, we go to battle over something that's a thousand dollars, two thousand, three thousand dollars, and by the time we're all said and done with how much time us, as your consulting firms, put into this trying to help them agree to something. Sometimes we've, well, more times than others we've been into where our clients have spent more money paying us to try to help get this thing, you know, negotiated, and so so, you know, all personal feelings aside, I feel she, you know, she was fairly offered compensation out of the gate. Otherwise, we wouldn't have arrived at that, um, you know, that agreement offering that we did. But I understand, you know, I don't own land, this isn't, I mean, people are very protective of their property, I get that too, so I, you try to look at it from both sides. It's difficult. I, to me, nine times out of ten, it works out if, um, if it's reasonable, which this, I suppose could be maybe considered reasonable. It might be a little high.
That's why, to me, it looks like it's excessive for what we're doing.
Two thousand or something, I mean, I, you know.
Yeah, when I look at it, it looks like it, like excessive for what we're doing, but then, when you throw it like you, that's why I asked you the question, if you throw it all in the washing machine, washing machine comes out being five thousand instead of three thousand, you know.
I know we've spent a great deal amount of time working on right of way already.
Well, and I think the hard part is her property is fifty yards from this bridge. It's not, you know, it's not a mile down the road, two miles down the road, it's like, there's gonna be construction in her driveway.
Sure.
Because that's just where they're gonna have to park.
And if we were to do this, we have, uh, the easement down the north side, so it would be, the easements would be completed for the project to move forward.
Right, it's a great thing.
The north side is done now, so this is just the south side.
Yes.
We do, we do have the north side acquired.
Just this one yet to go.
So if we agree to this, then that, we could be done.
Yes.
Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Seeing none, Jean?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Rick?
I'll vote aye.
Liza?
Aye.
I'll vote aye. That motion passes.
I think what, that's why, he answered my question, where we're gonna end up.
Anything else, guys?
That's it.
Yep, let's take a, a five minute recess.
Yes, and so I thought that I just changed this to include that law, whatever it had to be, commercial. Until I said the way you have this written, that's the only one that I see, they said we all did.
Nothing in front of me, I should clarify, I should write the proposal that they approved, or the, the, the twenty-seven, basically, so there's fifty-one percent and forty-nine percent.
And then it's to be crucial.
Well, the other side is federal, and that's covered through using all of your existing and then borrowing ahead to the difference.
Correct.
To reach that fifty percent in that budget, in that budget. But then with that, there is a twenty percent local match. And that's, that's definitely part of the use of the period of, that portion, as well as, so technically, what they decided to utilize was the DOT federally and the House Bill fifteen oh five. Given, she was at forty-nine percent, which is pretty much the most, the House Bill and period of. Yeah, so period of and House Bill fifteen oh five would be forty-nine percent. So how, how is it, they just use up all the fifteen oh five and then there's still some leftover and the period of covers that?
And the, the local match, you know, my money has local match requirements as well, which, period of.
So period of is being used to cover the local matches, and it's a tight net, whatever is left over after.
Because basically, they amended, the commission, they amended lot two, lot three to be from A to commercial, to approve. Is there any way you could just not, just say amended lot two, lot three, from A to now be commercial?
Right, because Todd is saying that you may do it like this, is only addressing this. I don't know what the answer to be worded.
Okay, yeah.
I don't know how to work, so. Todd, tell me, do you have this worded, that all we do is redo this one lot? So I don't know how to word it. And so do we have to bring it back up and reword it? Or can you just, I mean, because really, like you said, if we can change these to residential, these to commercial, whatever you want, we actually do that. Cause this is in on this eighty-nine meters, isn't it?
One.
So if we're rezoning these to R two and commercial, we just specified this one, then isn't this one, you know, a?
Yeah, we should have specified, that's why I like having this before the final, it doesn't work very well, but, so the, like, whatever's going to be R two, you should list out the lots.
Or list the lots, R two, and then, and then these are R two, and these are commercial, and this is commercial, and this.
I would get it corrected and just bring it forth, so we know exactly. Just, just for clarification. Like I said, I wish we had a little better system. Well, just, it's, you know, it's how you, it's how you list it.
Sorry, Carmen.
Or essentially listing based on, that's the way our code.
All right, I'll call this meeting back to order for the Mercer County Commission. Next on our agenda, we got Joey from Summit Carpet Solutions.
I'd like to thank the commission for their time this morning, I put some paperwork in front of you, it's called a road use maintenance agreement. This is one that Summit Carpet Solutions has drawn up and has distributed to the eighty-plus counties across the scope of this project. I've given this to Ken, he's reviewed it, the state attorney has reviewed it, they both have approved it without any changes. The question is, who signs it? Ken didn't know if it, if all the commissioners need to sign it or if he can sign it. So, that is what I'm here to determine.
Can I take a look at the contract, just refresh my memory? Somebody have a copy of the document?
I guess since this is new for our state's attorney, we want him to review it.
No, he's reviewed it, he's just refreshing himself with it.
It's just been a while since I read through it. And there's only so much space for immediate ironing.
The only, and I know the only question the road department had on it was the, uh, section four subsection C, required insurance. As we look at the limitation liability and then we look at the required insurance, that clause, it's like it just kind of ends, it just stops. That talks about both parties agreeing to something there, or just kind of-
Oh, and it says parties agree that.
There's nothing.
That was our only question on that one.
Yeah.
Didn't even notice that until right now.
I just figured it was a typo maybe, or I don't know, but, uh, was meant to be filled in after some discussion.
I would recommend that be filled in, and then as far as who signs it, to answer the question that was proposed. We don't have to have every commissioner sign it, we just need a resolution by the county, thumbs up, thumbs down, and then the chairman can sign it. Yeah, Jessica's not the stake, I can come on.
Hopefully that's not your deciding factor whether to approve it or not.
Just one thing that was brought up about. I think after, Ken or somebody brought this to my attention. I was told that Jessica had reviewed it previously.
Okay.
So, and the only thing I see is, and that's what I was looking for, so thanks for getting me on page.
Which one?
There was one thing on that four C on the H board. Parties agree that, let me figure out what we're agreeing to as to that clause.
The sentence just stops, so it's not, not fully thought.
One thing to notify you, from a legal standpoint, we cannot indemnify anybody, ender does not allow it.
What's off, five J?
Todd? Oh, yeah, yep, that's what I was asking too, five J, is that normal?
I would request that be removed.
Yeah.
It used to be American General Contractors Association back in the eighties because litigation costs were getting out of, out of the pan. Nobody disagrees with that, so they put everything into binding arbitration. Arbitration used to be a cost saver, now it's as expensive as litigation. And my advice is never waive your right to a trial by jury.
When I read the very, I mean, the first word is it's six words there, I didn't even want to go into the explanation of a waiver of right to jury trial.
And in that, it doesn't say anything about the arbitration. But on behalf of the citizens of the county, you cannot waive that right. I would consider that a dereliction of duty. And just to explain the indemnification back and forth, if we do something negligent, we're on the hook. They do something negligent, they're on the hook. So somehow, something happens or somebody gets injured. If it's because of something we did that we shouldn't have, or something we should have done but didn't do, we're still on the hook, no matter what this contract says. But, our ender coverage does not cover us having an outside party covering their liability. So I take a hard line against indemnification.
That out there.
Which one?
That, uh, J.
Yeah, that needs to come out.
Under number four B, is that a common practice one they have in there as well?
Or is that what you were just talking about, Todd?
Right.
The limitation liability?
Yeah, is that what you were just talking about?
Four B, four B is-
Right, that one should be.
That can stay.
Four B can stay, you said?
Remot.
Oh, wait a minute, wait a minute.
No.
No, that's, it's- No, four B comes out.
Okay, that's what I was thinking, but I just wanted to-
So, under five B, it says, if any provisions of this agreement prove to be illegal and valid or unforcible, the remainder of this agreement will not be affected.
That's standard language.
That's-
Right, so that's way, let's say that, um, trying to think of a legitimate situation in this particular.
Well, if you're okay with it.
Yeah, it, it's, it's language that if something changes in law on governing what they're doing, so they can't do it this way, they gotta do it that way, and it's not something we've done, it's something the legislature or the feds somehow have done.
Okay.
It doesn't nullify the whole contract.
Okay.
And when we're dealing with federal regulations on these kind of things, they literally have individual attorneys that that's all they do when it comes to this crap. There is no way that any person, unless they dedicate their entire time to it, is going to understand, know, and be able to do anything with the regulations that regulate regulations.
And basically, we're just talking road use and maintenance agreement. This whole, yes, that's correct.
Do we know what was supposed to be continued on four C?
Uh, this was drawn up by some attorneys at the corporate, so I'd had to find out for you.
So you wouldn't know?
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
So, do we, uh, move on this at all, or do we tell you we want these changes made and you need to take it back and then come back to us?
Yeah, I wrote down the changes, I'll submit it back to the, our attorneys and see what they can come up with.
Okay.
Just to recap here a little bit, I have four C, the sentence isn't completed, uh, four A, uh, that's an indemnity, remove that, four B, uh, remove, and then, uh, five J, remove.
So far, yeah. I don't know, not saying we're done, I speak for myself, there's more more here.
Here's what I would suggest, when is, when does the poll start for construction?
Uh, right now, I believe we're still on schedule for summer of twenty-three.
Okay, so we've got months.
Yeah.
Here's what I'd recommend doing, table this, I want each of you to go through it along with myself, and then next meeting, we'll address this and send back the modifications that we need, this way it can be more fully discussed by the board.
Correct, and I think even the quick suggestions we made or changes we want to see, he can definitely take it back to his people and yeah, I'll get him working on that.
I just let him know, there's no way I can advise the county to indemnify your company or any other company.
Okay.
We don't have coverage for it, so we don't do it, I don't know of any other counties that are, but they're not my headache.
Okay. Uh, I guess my last question is, who'd you say needs to sign for it, you said the whole, all the members?
Just the chair.
Just the chair.
Just the chair, will need to sign.
Yeah.
We approve it as-
In his absence, the co-chair.
Yeah.
Okay. Fantastic.
Travis is going anywhere, but stupid things happen unexpectedly.
He'll be here.
Needs to be approved by the commission and then-
Dean doesn't let me skip too often. But I don't, I don't think we're opposed to this in general, it's just, you know, Ken's gone through it, gone through it and let us review it and-
Sure, sounds good. One last thing, I'd like to bring up Jay Bolt from Summit, I think he's going to give a little bit of an update here.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, is it okay if I just take two minutes and go through just a couple of topics here quickly? Uh, first of all, I appreciate the time and the review of the, the last road use maintenance agreement request, and really, the aspect of that is really to just do what you did, is have an opportunity to review, revise, we'll make the changes, and I appreciate you guys taking that motion and tabling it forth. That is the process we were looking for, is to get the involvement in a finalized project down the road. So, want to appreciate that. The second part, I did want to just give an update from really approximately a year ago, we were in here and talking about a drill rig move. Uh, we, we moved that rig, we drilled three wells, and you guys know where we are at today, still working on the, the geology and simulating it to really getting to the locations. But what I did want to bring up in just full transparency, is we did sign a road bond approximately a year ago for that mile stretch as we were moving that, that road. And I did want to bring that up just to your guys' attention, that, that does expire on April seventh. And at this point in time, I, I do believe, and I would take comments on it outside of this meeting and moving forward, but I did want you some time to digest that as well. Is we would let that expire, and following up, we'll follow up with Ken and others, if there was anything that did not get corrected or you guys see on that. More than willing to meet with you guys on that as well. But I did wanted to note that for you guys, that is expiring April seventh for that rig move that we did last year. The last part, I would say, is another item that we will owe you guys upcoming, is we're going to continue to work on heavy loads. So again, this won't be the last time, a year ago that we did do some drilling. We're hoping to be on schedule to do drilling yet late this fall, potentially could go over the winter into the spring, all depending on timing. But working with you guys to, how do we move forward on, on moving large loads as it will come up again? So we are doing some work with some of the oil-bearing counties and we'll hopefully bring you guys some information for you guys to look at in the, the near future. That was updated, and I would take any questions related to the project overall if you guys have them.
Any, any questions? Appreciate you coming and letting us know about the bond and, I mean, Ken hasn't brought anything to our attention, but I don't really see an issue with letting that expire. And then, yeah, we'll just work on this agreement and any time you're gonna be drilling, you work through Cindy's office and we should be all good. Appreciate you coming down.
Appreciate it.
Wonderful. Thank you, guys, and thank you for your time today.
Thanks, Jay. All right, um, back to other business. We didn't do anything on the auction house. I know Jim wanted to be here for that. I see he's in here. We did get a letter, an email from City of Stanton. They didn't want any further involvement in it as far as that auction house goes, so... Jim, have you had any contact with anybody?
I guess you guys left it up to the auditor instead of turning, so I...
Yeah. Have you pursued anything, Todd?
We've sent emails to the interested parties, have gotten nothing as far as responses. The, uh, the proposition that Jim and I talked about, I think would be the best way is that we send an invite for them to come to the next commission meeting, let's figure out what's going on. Because there's some confusion, apparently in talking with Jim after the last meeting, that Chip was told to hold off on tearing down that building under his contract. And if that was done, then we don't have a breach contract. I think enough time and things have passed where nobody knows who's doing what and why. I think, get the interested parties in the room, let's figure it out. Need be, I can meet with Chip to find out what's going on and go from there. But I think we maybe should schedule it on the agenda just so that we give them the invite, come here, tell us what you want to do. I will point one thing out, because it's been rattled around, of the county paying the special assessments on that property. These were not assessed by the county, these were assessed by the city. All, all the county does when it comes to the city taxes is collect them, list them, bill them. I don't, don't think it's legal for the county to be paying city special assessments. So if that's part of the deal, I'm going to advise against it. If the city wants to waive the special to get it back on their tax rolls, that's up to them. That's not up to the county to be changing, eating, or paying a city tax.
I don't even know what we negotiated or what we discussed or...
We had kind of a plan, but that was working with the city. But based on the letter from the auditor of the City of Stanton, they want no involvement anymore. So whatever we had, I guess, kind of quasi-agreed to in the past, at this point, the city doesn't want to be involved in it, so that kind of becomes null and void. So, I mean...
So we're basically starting all over? Can I say that way?
More or less, yeah. We either need to revise...
Starting over with baggage?
Yeah. I mean, we either need to have a new contract for the demolition of it, or we need some type of purchase agreement. And I guess this was on a tax sale before. Nobody offered to buy it, that's why the county still has it. So from a standpoint of the county, we fulfilled our requirements under advertising? So if somebody comes in at any time after that, we can negotiate directly with them, correct?
Right.
So... Oh, Jim?
I guess that contractor demolition, I don't recall that ever being dismissed or...
Not dismissed, but we said to hold off on it because there was talk of someone buying the property and they wanted the building.
Does that mean it's null and void then, or I guess I, I guess when I brought that to you, I just informed the commission that Chip was interested. I don't know if it ever got to a point where he was told not to...
Yeah, who, like, who told Chip not to...
I guess I, I don't recall any.
But maybe that's to be discussed after.
That's, that's probably to be discussed, but what Todd was saying, if we delayed it or somehow we allowed it to be delayed, there isn't a breaching contract from the contractor's side.
Somebody has told him to hold off, it's a pretty good defense of breach contract.
The commission had him hold off. We did.
Yeah.
We, we told him to hold off. So I don't...
Who did?
The commission as a whole. Oh, you mean who personally walked up to him and told him to hold off?
The letters that told him to hold off, or I did? I just...
I never had a conversation with him.
I didn't have a conversation with him either, but, I mean...
So we got a whole lot of questions.
We have more questions than answers.
So I would say let's...
But my only...
Get Chip in here as the contractor and figure out what's going on.
My only thing is I don't know if we could enforce that, um, contract to tear it down at this point anymore.
It becomes questionable if, if somebody, if the commission has told him to hold off.
I know in a meeting, we, we said we were gonna wait because we had an interested party to purchase it. I don't know if anyone, if there was any formal letter or any formal, anyone formally met with him and told him to hold off, so, yeah, this, this, I guess it turned out...
Let's put it on the agenda. Have the auditor's office try to get ahold of him. I know there had attempts to try to get ahold of him in the past, but, um, put it on the agenda for the fifteenth and get all the parties involved and make a decision.
Yeah, we need to move forward on it.
Yeah. So I think we're good on the auction house. There was a question on social service building. Have we done anything further on that? I mean, I think we've had it listed for sale, but nothing's really happened with it.
What time did you put RFP up for?
For Realtor, right.
I don't think we ever got any.
I don't think we got an interest. We, I, we may have, but no one showed any interest.
No.
Because Todd, we did that at the same time as we did the auction house.
Correct.
Then again, we'd have to look in the, I use the word archives, but old minutes way back and see what we did decide. But I have just a thought or question. The US Post Office in Stanton building got closed. Is there any thought of moving that into our social service building? Is, can that be addressed at all, or...
Strictly up to the postal service.
Pardon?
Strictly up to the postal service.
You know, I don't want Mercer County necessarily being a landlord, but, uh, I think that's, uh, an option out there that, that could be used for that, that purpose. I don't know.
I brought that out to the postmaster too, but what she told me is they do five-year contracts to federal government. And there's something, a new company bought this building and now I think it's getting condemned, so I don't know where that's at. As I had mentioned, they have this building here. So there's really nothing they can do, so I don't know.
There's nothing the postmaster can do?
Yeah. From my understanding, the postmaster has run it up their chain of command and has no real direction, so, uh, the Stanton postmaster, in her position, can't make that decision on her own. I think otherwise she would have already.
I, I understand that. It has to go up. But somebody does make that decision ultimately. And are we able to... Is the lease on the current building expired?
I don't believe it is. I think that's the issue, so... And I don't know what company, she had told me a large company from out east bought a bunch of these small post offices. For the first year, but that is, I don't know.
Yeah. But I guess we're not opposed to it, but we can't make the offer. The US Postal Service would have to approach us essentially.
Well, they look for property to lease, don't they?
What's that?
The US Postal Service.
Usually, yeah.
You know, this, this is a total black hole for me, the US Postal Service, how that operates on leasing buildings, because a lot of people think that the post office is owned by the US government. And my understanding is they own none of them. They're, they, they lease the property. And if a building gets condemned, where they no longer can use that building, it... I don't know how a lease could, uh, still be held, you know, where you could say, well, no, you have to lease my building even though it's been condemned? That's a confusing part to me.
I don't know if it's been actually condemned, but I know she told me she can't find any contractors to... They refurbished the building, but they told it they won't touch it, so I think that's the issue, they can't...
I guess I'm at...
But we don't...
I'm probably getting in too deep here.
Yeah, we don't have jurisdiction.
My only thing is, I, there's a building there that's available. Is there a way we can let the US Postal Service know that we would have a building they could use? Nobody knows that.
That came from, that building the post office was in was condemned and closed down, and they moved it into the community center. I could call somebody and see all that and all that. Let them know. See what they had to go through that. Moved the post office itself. They just moved all the stuff in there, into their...
I'm just trying to help out the community here, you know, we got, we got a building that could be renovated to be used as a post office and, anyway.
Go through the Hazen postmaster, because that's currently where we're getting our mail, uh, Hazen, so...
Yeah, maybe Mr. Lingang knows something more.
Okay. Beat that up, Mr. Chairman. I'm done.
You're done? Okay. Moving on, um, November and December sheriff fees?
Do we know how much they were?
Yeah, do we have any amounts on those?
November's fees were twenty-four thousand, eight hundred and seventy-one dollars and ninety cents. And December's fees were four thousand, one hundred and forty dollars and ninety cents.
Okay. Was there a motion to accept the November and December sheriff fees?
So moved.
Motion by Gene, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Rick. Any discussion? Seeing none. Gene?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
All vote aye, that motion passes. Um, P and Z appointment? I think we had one applicant. Is Todd disappearing? Let's wait until Todd gets back in on that. I have a question on that one. Portfolio updates?
I don't have any.
Gene starts and says he doesn't have any. Rick?
Uh, Dakota Central Service, I went to my first meeting over in Washburn. They're setting up and getting, they got a new, uh, new manager over there too, who was his first meeting. They've got, uh, they had some budget issues and they worked through that and they've got everything pretty much up to, on, on track now. They'll know more about it next meeting with the state. West Central, I, uh, I haven't been there, I don't, that's a, it was a January meeting, but I don't, didn't know where or what on that one. Fair Board, um, one thing we've done with the Fair Board, we've been, we moved our meetings to, uh, instead of just in strictly Beulah or Hazen. That started with, um, the fact that we were, uh, being charged at, for to, uh, hold a meeting at the Civic Center. So we decided to, uh, we went down to Country Kettle, then we just went over to Hazen, and we decided to spread it around. Last, uh, last meeting was in Pick City, and the next one will be in, uh, Golden Valley. So, I mean, we're trying to hit everybody and be part of the community. Recorder, um, I, I visit with Shannon, Shannon there, really not a lot, a lot of changes. The Sheriff's Department, we've been talking about these roads. Uh, there's been some complaints on the trucks on the roads and they're, he's got that under control. They've been working on this, this past week here already. Road departments, we've heard about. The things that are my concerns are, Ken was here earlier, and we got what we're going, going forward with that. P and Z, again, we looked at what is plat and, uh, things that's what I've done with that, was my first meeting there. And Veteran Services, I stopped in and talked with Ron, and he said that everything was going good there.
Okay. Um, as far as my portfolios, not a whole lot has happened recently. Library Board meets towards the end of February. One thing that's not really a portfolio, but a little bit of an update, several individuals from Talon Metals were in Beulah yesterday. We had kind of an informal meeting with them. Nothing really new to update, um, as far as their progress in Mercer County. But, um, they're hoping to be here sometime, um, in April approximately. And they'll, uh, plan to do kind of a town hall type meeting or county hall meeting. I don't, I guess I don't know what you do when it's the whole county. But, um, uh, when they come, they'll open up for questions and answers on, on their progress and what things are happening. So I just wanted to say they were here. We, um, a few of us met with them. It was, um, Beulah Mayor and Hazen Mayor and auditors and economic development directors. Just kind of a meet and greet, but, um, more to come from that. Kind of how we've discussed a little bit today, but, um, if there's things, um, goals, or things that we'd like to see change, whether it's planning and zoning or whatever, kind of, kind of bring those to those boards' attention. The best thing to do with codes and policies and things like that is to review them from time to time. What worked for us in nineteen eighty might not work for us today. Um, there's nothing wrong with that. So if we see things that could be done better, um, let's, let's address them and go forward. I know at the last P and Z meeting, we kind of went through the draft on a, on the solar ordinance. Um, there was a lot of questions, a lot of potential changes, so I think, um, that will be coming in the near future. I'm sure planning and zoning will, will discuss it again at the next meeting. But as far as updates, that's all I have. Liza?
Um, on the airport board, um, pretty much, you know, we went through and elected new officers to that board. And then we also, um, probably the biggest thing that came up is we were working on a plow blade purchase, so that way it can be more efficient for, um, the maintenance crew at your work there. So there was a improvement, approval for the purchase of a different plow blade. I wasn't able to do the ambulance because I was gone, and Don came in with the treasures issues, and I still need to meet with Carmen. Got to again, now that I got her portfolio back again, so I need to start meeting with her.
Okay. Jamie?
Jim, not much for building and grounds.
Um, Jim, not much for building and grounds. Candy did say their, for the landfill, their loader air seat is not working and their heater is not working. Um, but Butler is supposed to be coming to fix those, um, but she can manage until then. Um, the only other concern I guess I had from Candy is, um, she didn't get in an email. I know a few of us didn't get emails, so it was just kind of a reminder of emailing, but she didn't get some stuff that was for department heads. So, um, Mr. Langowski and I are playing phone tag. And the other two, Missouri River and Western Dakota, I have sent contact and not heard contact back, so just waiting on them. And L E P C, I believe, meets in March.
March.
March, right, so.
Yeah.
And Custer Health, um, I spoke to Marv, he gave a little update, but he's kind of still taking lead on Custer Health, so.
Um, Todd, you're back in here, um, we have an application for, uh, P and Z appointment. I don't have a problem with who applied, I just, um, Cindy, it's your husband, correct? Yeah, so I just, before we make any decisions, is there anything to fall under nepotism? I couldn't think of anything, but.
Yeah, it does fall under nepotism.
Okay.
Let me take a look to see if there's an exception. I have to step on tape, call that some bad news.
Should we table it for the next meeting?
Yeah, let's do that.
Okay.
I'll have an answer for it today, yeah.
Okay, so.
Just go.
Go ahead.
Before you adjourn.
No, I wasn't gonna adjourn. I was, did you have a question, Gene, or?
No, no, no. Not different, totally different.
Okay, that, that's all, I mean, if we're, if we're gonna postpone that to the next meeting, that's all I have on the P and Z appointment, but should you have a question on something else?
Yes. Uh, Jamie brought, as soon as she talked about the landfill, um, when was that, um, lease due for that land out there? I didn't see that on our, or.
We put it out, was it?
Okay.
Um.
Was it next week?
I think.
Next meeting, I think?
Yeah, I thought it was the fifteenth, because we were gonna advertise it in a couple of weeks.
Okay, okay.
If I, because I, I just listened to you guys' minutes or listened to you guys on the video and I thought for sure it was the fifteenth, which.
Okay.
Yeah.
I, I'm just saying, as soon as Jamie talked and.
That it stirred a memory?
Landfill, yeah.
Yeah, I believe it was the fifteenth, because we were gonna give a couple of meetings, um.
I got some questions you want to talk about it too, just quickly, uh, towards landfill too, I got a phone call.
Oh, yes, sorry, that's what I, also I wanted to.
Well, go ahead if you want.
Okay, so we, Rick called me, um, there was some complaints from the City of Beulah and I believe the City of Hazen about garbage dumping because the landfill was closed on Thursday. I talked to Candy, the landfill was not closed, but they were, Beulah was made aware they could not dump their truck Thursday because of the high winds that have come up, and she does have a wind ordinance. Um, holiday had come, they dumped early, Hazen got up early that morning, they dumped and they were able to resume. So it sounds like it's just an issue with Beulah and it sounds like it's not the first time it's happened, which we didn't get that side of the story, so I'm gonna reach back out to Kenny Jaeger and reach back out to Dave Brew, so, um, Dave was out when I called and see if this is a common thing. I know Bismarck does not close their landfill, but, um, Jacob Olson just went to landfill school and actually Dickinson, Wilson, Minot, they do all close due to weather, so we don't have the garbage blowing around. So it's not, it's not just us. The wind came up out of nowhere. Rick and I were, when he called me with that, I'm like, the wind is crazy now, so. It sounds like it's not a first time issue, but something that we need to address with the cities. So they did have the option to dump at the transfer station if they needed to, but they've only been coming once a day on Thursdays to dump Beulah's truck, is what I was told, so they, it, yeah. It sounds like it's just kind of a point of contention, but.
I, I just had, I just got the call and I referred it to her and that was like, you know.
So I did talk to Candy and asked what, what the rules are, what the, and that's, that was her side of the story. So I'll reach back out to both city garbage crews and.
Only thing I would like to add to that was, uh, in our conversations with Jamie and I had there was, she came up, I thought was a really good idea too, is, uh, you know, we absolutely don't want garbage blowing around, but she had, you know, these, uh, we have these freestanding panels that they make, you could, we could possibly have a, at some point you could put these freestanding panels up and have a place to dump on those type of times where they're covered up, but I just, I just thought it was kind of a neat solution that you come up with and, uh, I wanted to share that too, it's something that we could down the road.
And I think it was before we knew that there was an actual wind ordinance, so she's gonna get me a copy of that wind ordinance because I think then it's out of her control. Um, but, yeah, like I said, once I get that wind ordinance, I'll reach back out to Kenny and Dave and see if there's a solution we can come to, but it sounds like Hazen got up early, did it, holiday came early, so, yeah.
I don't know if it's necessarily an ordinance, it might be a policy, but.
Yeah.
Yeah, we did it about a year ago.
Yeah.
So.
Okay.
But, yeah, it's, it's been a contention since it started, so. Um, any, any other business for the board? Oh.
I was concerned after you had said that they could change the zoning around on the residential, commercial, it doesn't have to stay like that because you could take, you don't usually have that on a plat.
Right.
So I had talked to Todd about it and he says the way we had it, made the motion and had it written up, we only changed the one lot.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it was just.
So we need a clarification or?
Two blocks, three.
I don't know how you do it.
Well, that's the way it shows it on the, on the diagram though, it's one.
No, but your motion was only for that one lot, I don't.
Well, we were just changing to R two and commercial and then you specified that.
The intention was to get all of those lots changed. Resolution only had one lot within that subdivision.
It was to change.
Well, the intent was that set of lots.
So we just need to add that we want all the lots in there?
Like, I, I changed, there's the wording with it. I don't know what you guys want to do.
That's the only one that was addressed, yeah. That's all you're wanting to change?
Make this commercial.
Is that one lot?
Yeah.
And then leave the rest of these?
These are commercial.
Those are considered A right now and we need to switch them, right?
That's what they want.
They're listed on the plot.
They request it.
That's what they're requesting.
Okay.
So we were just changing their, their, this is what they're requesting, is my understanding. And then my heart was leaving this A. Just make this commercial, because they, they got this listed as one property here though.
But the way the resolution did, didn't say anything about those, it just said that.
They only do that one.
Yeah. This is still agricultural right now.
We just need to add to it, right?
You need to see lots one through seven, block, whatever it is.
Gene, Cindy has it printed here.
Okay, so, um.
Are you supposed to say anything or are you supposed to give it to you?
I'll give it to you.
I just wanna, wanna make sure we're covered on that.
Yeah.
I'll step down for a minute. Oops.
Why do I believe this engineer might have something to do with the flat and plot?
Yeah, he does. He did, he did reduce themselves, but I didn't know if he actually had them as an, on his chair.
That is preferable.
So you want to change, the motion change to include, uh, lots one through seven, block four?
All. Everything.
To commercial for lots. Twenty.
Cindy, yeah, Gene should have it right there.
I'm trying to, trying to read through.
Oh, you both.
Now, before, all we did was we changed it from A to R two and commercial and we had that one lot for the whole unit. That's commercials, but now causing we have to have like lots one through seven, block four, our residential plus.
Like be more specific, right?
Lots one, lots two, or commercials, and if this was the, I don't know.
Five, this is, this is, one of the plot five?
That's not a big person.
That's a great day.
But I thought everything was supposed to go commercials, so that way I know I had a reservation.
Oh, okay, so basically what we did is we, we re-zoned lot two, block three to commercial, but didn't do anything with anything else.
Didn't do the rest of them.
Okay, so we can leave that as is and just say.
Amended to that.
Is to change this or agree to this, but strike out lot one, block five, because we are, no, it's lot two. Oh, that's, where did I just?
I think where the confusion comes from, Gene, is that they're submitting this plot for approval and all of that land is designated A.
Yes, I agree.
And then on the plot, it lists it as commercial what they're trying to get. The previous motion as written up in the resolution only addressed that one, of course, odd shaped lot.
We hear you.
We need to change the whole, well, lot.
Well, just a minute. We, we, we changed block two, lot three to commercial. All we need to do now is agree to the rest that they proposed, uh, but, but cha- but leaving lot two, block three as we already did. And I'm trying to find that in their, um.
You're procedurally amend the original motion to include.
It's not in there because I changed it in between.
Oh.
Remember it was.
This is a change now?
That's the change.
That's the change, yeah.
Okay.
So what you'd want to do procedurally is you would want to move to amend the previous motion to include those other blocks to correct a misunderstanding.
Okay, so where did, someone, someone agree to that?
Well, make a motion to amend the previous motion on the zoning to correct a misunderstanding. We only corrected lots one through four and block two?
No, you only corrected one lot.
Lot two, block three.
Lot two, lot two, block three.
And it should be lots.
We would like to add to this amendment to change it from agricultural to R two district and, and lots, block, one through seven, block four to block four to commercial district for lots one through four, block two, and lots one and two, block three. Lot one, when block five will remain as A.
Yeah, that sounds good to me.
Can you give that copy to Glenn so she can, because that was hard for her to copy as we were writing.
Did that motion sound proper?
As proper as it's probably gonna get.
We're getting enough ones in here, Rod, not on, but if the intent is to adopt the proposed resolution.
Yes.
Yes.
That's the motion?
The, the, yeah.
We just need a second.
I'll second.
We want to. Yep, we want to, um, adopt the proposed resolution, but cha- but have lot two, block three as commercial also.
We already moaned.
Which we already did. Okay.
So this is an addendum to the previous motion.
Right.
All right, all those in favor? Or, wait a minute, any more discussion? All those in, oh, not all those in favor, this is roll call again.
Yeah.
Who made the motion? Rick?
Rick did and I seconded.
Rick, how do you move?
I vote aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Gene, aye. I got your names right. One thing I did right.
And you're done with it? Thanks, Cindy. And just pass it down, everybody sign it, then.
Well, I just hope that the develop, they understand we're, we're okay with the whole thing, it's just that that one, I actually see it as two lots, but on here it shows it as one lot. Pardon?
The developer and the landowner are the same person.
Yeah.
Okay. That's what I was understanding.
Now, we basically okayed it the way they propose it, except for that.
Okay.
I wanna read it.
Any other?
Lot two, block three, we changed to commercial. That was the intent. Holy cow.
Any other business? I'm gonna say it again, just because we've had a lot of things. Any other business? Seeing none, reading adjourned.
I want the easier ones from now on.
This was easy.
We just didn't do it right the first time.